Pay increase for both the employees, uh but it was it was too late, so and it was my fault. I I just um. I forgot to email um and then on time, so.
You know, I asked that when we were doing the budget.
Yeah, 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 I know. I'm I'm aware. Yeah, but now we're we're still we're still in budget anyway. I mean, we don't have as many as many employees, so um. And and I think they deserve it anyway, so I wanted to add it. I just uh I just forgot, so it will be anyway, we're meeting, I believe. Uh first week of June or something like that again, so it's not too far away.
No, it's not.
And and maybe if the board is okay, maybe we can, you know, uh. Go back two weeks and reimburse them as well if 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 they choose to to increase their pay.
It's not. They don't work enough hours where it's gonna make a big difference. I think they'll just be happy to have the increase and there's no reason to do that. You can say on the next payroll and they'll be happy instead of going, I thought about doing this and didn't. Don't do that.
Yeah, well, I I I planned on it, but uh sometimes time, yeah, time goes by fast, so. Let's see who's here. Uh, it looks like only Mike. See who else is gonna be here. I think Mike said he uh will be here. Ralph said he will be here and Larry.
Hi Fred.
Hello.
Fred, wait us. Hi Fred, how are you?
Hi, I'm good.
Awesome. We don't have usually someone from the planning department. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. I thought I would tend to see it. I'm I'm here to answer any questions um that anybody might have uh about the U-Pass properties.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Hmm, let's see if someone else. I don't have a quorum yet. Just shoot a text to uh Larry and Ralph real quick.
Hey, one. Yeah, I'm in now. Yep, all forwarded to.
Hi, everyone.
Hi Larry.
Hi Larry.
Uh Larry disregard my text.
What?
Disregard my text. I just sent you. I just sent you a text to remind you.
Oh, okay. I couldn't find the email to. You know how old people are. It takes them a while.
No worries, no worries. You got a five-minute grace period anyway.
Okay.
Let's see if uh I sent a message to Ralph as well, and I don't know if. I'll try Barzati as well, just in case. All right, I sent everyone texts um. You see in it. Larry. Hey, Mike, are you here? Think Mike stepped away from the computer, so we still don't have a quorum. I'll give it another minute or two. I apologize. Hey, Mike, are you on your computer? I'll shoot him a text as well.
Ralph isn't around.
Can you can you hear me, Shemmy?
Yeah. He was gonna secure a text, so he might be off, Mike.
Okay, so Barsati's not coming, I guess.
Okay, all right. Uh, well, now that you are.
Yeah, sorry, I thought I uh you could hear me, but I guess I was muted. I'm sorry.
No worries, no worries. And I did send Ralph a text. He actually texted me earlier asking uh what time is the meeting, so. He's aware of it. Maybe he's just a little late, uh but uh we have a. Room in here. Ralph is here as well, so we can we can uh. Start. Let's make sure that we got a picture of him and he can hear us, Ralph.
Yes, I can.
Hello, hello. How are you?
Great.
Awesome. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Metropolitan District uh regular meeting. On May twenty-second and the time is four oh seven. Um Elena, would you be kind and do the roll call for us?
I'm actually going to have Kristen roll calls, okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Uh Secretary Michael Barzati.
He's not here.
Treasure Ralph Jacobson.
Here.
Director Larry Fox. Director Michael Graham.
Here.
Chairman Shemi Shlomo.
And I'm here. Awesome. Thank you. All right, uh, our first thing is the approval of the agenda. As written.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as as written.
Uh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 It'll be four to zero. Um, all right, concept calendar approval of the March thirteen uh twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. April ten and April fifteen. Uh, let me see if we can. I think we can do all of them in one shot. Cause every one of us was there. I'll just verify real quick. March thirteen. We were all there. April, we were all there. And May. We were all there. Anyone has any? Comments on the minutes? Any changes? If not. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes for March thirteenth, April tenth and April fifteenth as written.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That would be four to zero as well. Thank you. Uh, reports, parking report. Uh, Juan, hi, how are you?
How are you, Shemmy?
I'm good, good. How are you?
I'm doing good.
Awesome. Um, I have just a small question real quick, uh but we can do it after the report. Just so I don't forget. Go ahead.
James, go go ahead.
Uh, yes, uh, nothing, nothing new, um aside from the. The traditional uh revenue reports. Um, did anybody have any questions regarding the? The data that was provided?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Was there any any malfunctions or any problems with the kiosk at the Smishni lot this month or last month in April?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So we are thirty-one percent down.
And that is. I believe similar to what we got uh for our revenue throughout town as well. Um, uh, this was a down.
Okay. Anybody else has some questions?
That was my only question also. That was a significant drop, you know, compared to Wichita was up a bit, but. Uh. Uh, that was my question. There was anything wrong there?
There is not. Um, March, I'm sorry, April was slower than than March this year, so. Um, we either had a a real busy. Uh, March where we had a real slow April, uh but those numbers are consistent. Throughout town. Um, our numbers uh are even lower uh for April as well. But it's it's townwide.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was gonna.
Mike, you're you sound. We can't. We can't understand. We can't understand you at all. I can't.
Lot compared to last year, but we're down. Oh, okay, Hank. All right. Can't hear me, huh?
Uh, we can hear you, but it's 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 really, uh, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Is this any better?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so we didn't hear what you had to say. Uh, you were.
Well, I tried unplugging my headset. So I'll just shut down and restart my computer and hope to get back to you in a second.
You're you're okay for right now. Mike, Mike, we can hear you now.
Good, good. Oh, I was just saying, we we were only down a few hundred dollars compared to a year ago at Wichita. But we're down thousands at Smishni.
Yes, Smishni is definitely the the one that has the more substantial revenue drop.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else has a question or concern about the parking report? Okay, all right, thank you, James. Um, before I forget one. Um, did you, what did you find out from uh Denise about the um lighting grant?
Yeah, Shemi, I I still haven't heard anything. I'll 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 circle back today and uh. And I could get back to you today. I'll send you an email on that.
Okay, I I appreciate it. Thank you. I I just I'll just give us quick updates um be again before I forget. Um, I I did meet uh um Marcus Electric uh about those uh lights. Um, I I I think you and James had a report that said which one of the lights was out. Um, is there any way, James, you can let me know which one was it? Um. I think you said there were two at Wichita and one in Smishni. Is that correct?
I believe so. I'll double check and then I'll I'll chime in once I have that answer.
Okay, that would be awesome. Thank you so much. Um, so yeah, I did. I did talk to Marcus about it and uh. He did say that some of them belong to us and some of them belong to the city of Colorado Springs Utilities. Um, so if when I identify which one it is that's uh not working. Um, I will let Marcus know which one it is and he will contact uh. Colorado Springs Utilities uh for us. Um, and if it's the ones that are on the restroom, they belong to us and we can change it. Uh, and we will pay for it ourselves. So, um, to be continued on that. All right, thanks for listening to that. Um, next is, I believe, Nicole. I just lost the paper.
Okay, well, go ahead and just put up the April only one. Um, does does anyone have any questions? Did you look at at the reports at all?
Um, I did. I didn't have any questions, but I'll just um leave it for everyone else. While I'm still digging for my papers.
And I did make the first uh payment here in May for the mortgage, if anybody cares.
Yes, we do. Thank you for that.
Now, where's that at now?
It it's the private owner. Uh, Thomas, is it done?
Yes, Thomas done.
Where's it on the list here? I don't see it.
You can't see it because this is April reporting. I just made the first.
Oh, great. Okay, never mind. We'll see you next time.
Cool.
Um, Nicole, is the payment for the CD goes out every month or is it one big lump sum once a year?
We've done it both ways. Um.
Can I find it on this report here in front of me or?
It's so it's not on there. Um.
Okay.
But if you want me to start doing it monthly, I can certainly do that. Uh, it should be under city city services right there on the bottom.
Okay, I I see it. No worries. It's good the way it is. Um, I was just wondering. Thank you. Uh, any questions for Nicole about the finance report?
All right, thank you.
Who who would pay fifteen thousand dollars to? For the professional services?
Uh, that was for the uh fencing, uh boarding it up. And uh taking everything out, uh cleaning the inside of the property because it had. Absolutely, you know, it was stuff was there all over the place.
Right.
Um, yeah, so we needed it. We needed it cleaned and uh still trying.
And I just I didn't uh. I didn't associate that one with it. Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole.
All right, next, uh, do we need to approve the report? I think so. Okay, um. I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Ralph.
I move that we accept the uh financial report.
I'll second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Uh, that would be four to zero.
Sorry, I did notice that you just said the parking report or the finance report, not the parking and finance.
I amend my uh state wills through both reports, the parking and finance reports.
Lovely.
I'll second that. Um, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There will be four to zero. Thanks, everyone. Uh, we got presentation, I believe it's Elena for the Colorado Sunshine Law. Um, about the Colorado Sunshine Law.
Yep, um, so we were asked to just cut together some information regarding that. Um, so Kristen did a presentation that she'll share with you. And if you have any questions, if we can just wait until she's finished with that and then we can address it at that point. That's okay.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, so Colorado Sunshine Law um informs the methods by which public meetings are conducted. And underneath that, we have the Open Meetings Law. Says that all meetings of three or more members, um, let's see here. Thank you. I had something blocking. Um, so all meetings of three or more members of any local public body. Where any public business is discussed must be open to the public. Uh, so what is a local public body? Um, that could be a board, committee, commission, policymaking or rulemaking advisory. Formally constituted body of a political subdivision. And um generally any public or private entity that has been delegated any governmental decision-making function. Um, and then it's worth noting that persons on the administrative staff. Um, of the local public body are excluded from the definition of a local public body. Um, and what is a meeting? Um, defined broadly by the statute as any kind of gathering convened. To discuss public business in person, by telephone, electronically, or by other means of communication. And then there are four types of meetings. We have open meetings, meetings requiring notice. Meetings requiring minutes and executive sessions. Um, so more specifically, open meetings, um again, meetings with three or more. Members of any local public body or quorum whichever is less. At which any public business is discussed or at which formal action is to be taken is considered an open meeting. Meetings are requiring notice, um with a minimum of twenty-four hours public notice. With specific agenda information where possible, um in which um two possible things are happening. Um, so first, it could be the adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation or formal action occurs. Or at which um majority or quorum of the body is in attendance or expected to be in attendance. Um, here. Meetings require minutes when the adoption of any proposed policy, position. Resolution, rule, regulation or formal action occurs or could occur. And then, um, lastly, executive sessions, a few notes on these. Upon affirmative vote of two-thirds quorum present, members may hold a closed session at regular or special meetings. For the purpose, considering a limited number. And that second point basically states that no action can be taken, meetings that are not open to the public.
I'm sending a lady to you who just bought a storage locker.
And then, um, prior to the session, um, executive session, you have to um. State the specific provision authorizing the executive session as well as the topic to be discussed in as much detail as possible. Uh, some topics for executive session include property transactions, attorney conferences. Negotiations, personnel matters, confidential matters under state or federal law and documents protected under Cora. So a quick note about Cora, um emails concerning public duties or funds. Are for the most part public records under the Colorado Open Records Act. Emails that are not included in Open Meetings Law um are explained here, uh so it states that. Communications among elected officials that does not relate to the merits or substance. Of pending legislations or other public business shall not be considered a meeting. Emails about scheduling and availability, of course, don't fall under the Open Meetings Law. And then emails from an elected official for the purpose of forwarding information. So your best practices when emailing are gonna be to blind carbon copy. Um, which allows you to send out information to multiple people. Um, but recipients will not be able to see who was blind carbon copied on the email. Uh, this limits the possibility for discussion between three or more members. Uh, you could also include labels like one-way email. Or do not reply when sending out information to prevent discussion that could trigger the Open Meetings Law. So essentially, um, to avoid triggering that Open Meetings Law, you're trying to avoid that back and forth conversation about public business. All right, uh, we're ready for questions.
Thank you for the presentation, Kristen. Let's see, I don't have any questions, but uh Mike, did you have any? Um. Larry, anybody?
No, I'm good.
No.
Okay, thank you for the information and for the nice presentation, Kristen. Thank you. Uh, old business, um, okay, discussion regarding the U-Pass motel property, um. Mike, did you add that one? Or or is that just uh?
No, it was Mike. He's muted.
Thank, thank you. Let me get back up to the, I didn't get this printed out like I usually do, so I'm. Looking at the agenda on my uh phone. Yeah, that was so that we could kind of talk about how we were gonna move forward with trying to get somebody to help us. Um, prepare the uh city required permit. Uh, and so, you know, I've been fooling around for like three weeks trying to find somebody to help us, cause. I went and met Fred when uh, you know, maybe three to four weeks ago. And Denise came in and she told me, she said, you know, you need to get some, you know, it would help if you had some professional help. So, you know, I've kind of gone around and around and uh been talking to one of the former. Planning directors for the about the last three weeks and just not been able to. Uh, you know, he says he can do it. He says he can do all these great things and he's. Uh, added a lot of other tangents that I didn't ask for to begin with, but he won't commit to. Doing the, filling out the uh required application and he. He won't commit to when he could do it or, you know, he won't commit to an outcome or. Uh, so unfortunately, and this was Todd Liming, unfortunately, it's just not gonna work out that way. Uh, we're not gonna be able to use him, I guess, because we keep talking about, I think we had seven emails back and forth. And I'm still at the uh, you know, the first uh, I haven't gotten any further than the first email brought us. So uh, I don't really have anybody. Shemi, do you have anybody?
So I've uh uh emailed and uh tried multiple people. I did have. Uh, someone answer uh shortly, maybe forty-five minutes ago, and he said he will help us. Um, um, he's an architect and uh I know him from uh previous uh work he's done for me. Um, he knows Manitou, he's worked in Manitou, his name is Glenn. Um, his company is DDD. Um, design, if I remember right. Um, I didn't even have time to look at his email, but um I believe he said uh. That he will, he will go for it. He's supposed to send me a more um. Defined email which uh he said. Let me see real quick. So he's saying that um he's gonna do. Gonna help us uh fill it out. If I can find the right email, it will be helpful. Um, yeah, the it's DDD Services, um and he will. Uh, consult support of demolition permit for eleven twenty-six to eleven thirty-two Manitou Ave. Uh, he will attend CDE of Manitou Springs, HPC and council meetings. Uh, prepare materials for presentation at the above meetings. Uh, he will participate in client meetings as required. Um, and so on. He's got a little bit more. He's at um fifty dollars an hour, not to exceed two thousand dollars. Um, I think it's uh. A fair rate. I have uh no, no problem with it. Um, if anyone has a problem, let me know. Uh, my ping, so we can, we can, uh, we can go forward with that. Someone will help us, um, that way, uh, we're still on, that way, we're still on the agenda for, um, that way, we're still on the agenda for, uh, June. Um, I think, uh, I've been of, uh, Fred, actually Fred is with us today. Um, I, I'm not sure if he's listening or not, uh, he's muted and he's not, uh, he doesn't have the, hi Fred. Um, I, I sent an email yesterday. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, the, the post is back. Um, I believe it was kind of ripped apart, uh, the one for May first on the property. Uh, I just wanted to make sure it's going to be out there for the June first. We, we, uh, we plan on attending there, um, with professional help, um, and we will bring as much, uh, of the material that you're asking as we can, uh, at least for the preliminary, uh, meeting. So, and I believe, uh, I believe in May, uh, there was somebody there trying to speak, so I, I bet they'll come back in June and it will be good to see them over there, um, and hear what they have to say as well. Let's see what else. Go ahead, Fred.
Oh, yeah, there's a couple of things on that. Yes, if, if, um, um, I, uh, I, I had sent an email asking if, uh, depending on whether you had a complete application or not, we can always, uh, we can always take the, we can always take this agenda item off the agenda and then put it back on a future agenda when, uh, when you're ready or when the metro district is ready, uh, with a complete application. That's not a problem. Then we can republish and, and we can re, uh, we, we can repost.
I'd rather stay on the agenda. Uh, that's, that's why I sent the email. I really want to stay on the agenda, especially since people are going to come there again. Um, and if they're not going to be able to speak, uh, I think they're going to be even more disappointed after they sat there for several hours and they couldn't.
Okay, um, so, so what we would need is, is, is a complete application i- in order, uh, to present that to the, to the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission, um, so they can, um, um, so they can, um, hold that agenda item. If, if, if there's not a, um, an application, then, um, there would prob- most likely be a recommendation for the commission to go ahead and continue it and continue it to the July meeting.
The way I see it is just as easy to just add it and leave it on there, and if we make it with the complete application, we're ready. And if we don't, then they just, uh, move it to the next month. It's just easier that way. It's, uh, that, that's the way, that's the way I see it. Um. Go ahead.
And we can certainly do that, absolutely. Um, e- either way, well, one, one thing to keep, uh, maybe for the metro district to keep in mind, if, as long as it's on the agenda, there's, that always generates a certain level of interest and a certain level of questions, uh, from the public as to what's, what's happening, what's going to be done, and if, uh, um, and, and if there isn't, um, if there isn't an application and the HPC proceeds to continue it to the next meeting, sometimes that adds to a little bit of confusion as to what's going to happen at any given meeting.
Sure, we're, we're, just to be, just to be fair, we're not, we're not hiding anything. Uh, we, we were out there and we're saying exactly, and this is part of why, why we want to have that, uh, to have that post over there. So in any case, no one will be able to say, hey, this came in a surprise. I'd much rather have it there than not. Uh, so I, I, I appreciate you doing that, um.
Yeah, what, what we'll do is we will make, we will get, we'll get a poster ready and we can put, and we, and we will repost, um, uh, before Friday.
Okay, that would be, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Shimmy, shimmy, I got a question for Fred, and, uh, you know, Fred, I came into your office and needed some help when we were starting this whole thing out. You helped as much as you could, but I guess I, I'm having a hard time understanding how the Metropolitan Parking Board is a part of the city, and we give, we're paying fifty thousand dollars to the city for other city services, and Elena and Kristen are recording our meeting, and, uh, Juan and, and James are coming to our meetings. But when we need help with planning and with submitting this application, we can't get it. So why is it the planning department can't help the Metropolitan Parking District, but the parking department can help, the city clerk's office can help, the finance office can help, but I don't understand why the planning department can't help?
Um, well, lem- let me start with, what, what kind of help are you looking for?
Well, we need to get this application approved. What if, what if the city wanted to tear down, uh, the Yoot Pass Motel? Now, the Dylan Motel, they're going to tear down, but they told me that wasn't a historic, uh, historic property. But if the city wanted to tear down the Yoot Pass Motel, which were a branch of the city, wouldn't they have you do some of this work?
Um, I, I don't know. I'm not sure if that's a scenario that, that, um, um, that, that I'm familiar with.
We're not, we're not a, we're not a land developer that wants to build a casino that is, uh, trying to get this application together. We're a branch of the city. Why are we different from all the other branches, or why is planning different?
Mike, Mike, don't forget, don't forget that he's, don't forget that he's new and.
No, no, I agree, but I'm just saying, this is, I'm confused.
All right, I just need to jump in here and go, you're not a branch of the city. The Metropolitan District is their own, you're, you're own municipality, and we just provide services to you, and none, none of the planning department has ever been in the MOU.
Okay, okay, what's our E I? What's our E I N?
You are sharing the same E I N as us currently because we are submitting your payroll.
Okay.
And that's how it was set up. I don't know why it was set up that way, but basically it's because we are paying your.
So we're not, we're not a part of the city.
No, not, no. You have, you, I have to submit your financial information separately. You get an exempt from audit. You are not a component of the city. It's only complicated.
Um, so my, my familiarity with, with Title Thirty-two districts, my understanding is the Metropolitan District is a Title Thirty-two district. Um, it's a quasi municipal district. Um, I'm, I'm familiar with working with, with, with special districts from where I come from, and um, they must follow the jurisdictions, uh, uh, codes, just like any other property owner. Um, and as a, as a planner, as a planning director, I have to, um, evaluate an application independently and objectively for the city and for the Historic Preservation Commission, um, and it wouldn't look good for, uh, city staff to, um, be helping an applicant with their application when I'm supposed to be looking at it objectively, um, and, and, uh, on behalf of the city.
Okay, that's a good explanation.
Uh, we're, we're more than happy to help, um, um, uh, as much as we can with, with evaluating an application and, and helping, uh, making sure that, uh, you and other applicants understand the, the application requirements and, and what that entails. Um, but we're not able to put one together, uh, or help put one together for you.
Thank you, Fred.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, um, so back on track, guys. Uh, anyway, um, about the Yoot Pass again. Um, so there will be, uh, someone that would, you know, someone is going to help us with that, uh, professional help, Fred, so it, it's, it's gonna show up here, uh, soon on your desk. Uh, we're working on it. I, I appreciate you, uh, leaving us on June HPC. Um, it's, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you. Uh, even if it's for the preliminary and, you know, um, I, I, I appreciate that a lot. Um, we're also, just to let you know, we're, we're trying to, um, I saw the meeting, the recorded meeting of HPC and, um, I believe they requested, the request, uh, was made, I believe it was, I don't remember who, who, who made the request, but someone requested to, uh, a site visit. Um, so we're working on, uh, making sure it's safe for everyone. In the minute it's safe, um, uh, you know, and the, you know, all the needles, uh, that were all over the place and asbestos, uh, is all removed, the minute it's all going to be gone, um, we will be happy to have everyone over there. Um, whoever wants to come and visit, um, we will definitely let them come in. Um, again, we're not hiding anything and we would, we would like to, uh, uh, get whoever wants in, in. Um, maybe, even if they need to do it one at a time, it's no problem at all.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep, uh, if, if you want to, uh, forward the message, uh, since, uh, I was instructed not to speak to anyone, um, you're more than welcome, uh, to forward it if that's, if that's okay, um, that we're not doing anything, uh, to demolish the building and won't until, um, they're going to give us the approval.
Okay.
We're only trying to make it safe for everyone before they show up and visit. Um, all right, thank you. Thank per, thanks for that. Um, anything else on the discussion of the Yoot Pass Motel property, Ralph?
What's, what's the name of the company?
Uh, which one, please?
The, the consultant, consultant.
I believe DDD Services, if I'm not mistaken.
DDT or DDD?
Triple D.
Okay, okay, good.
Yes.
And, um, well, that's good news. It's, it's sad that Todd Liming really fell through on us. I've known him for decades, and, uh, that's something that he wasn't able to do it. But anyway, we move forward, and I, we don't waste any more time with him, and I'm sorry that Mike Graham had to deal with that, so disappointing.
We're all trying our best. We're all trying our best. Uh, Mike spent, uh, several weeks on this, um, while I was, uh, on vacation. Um, and, you know, we're trying our best. Uh, let's not forget, we're all volunteers. So, uh, we try to do the right things, um, in a timely manner. Um, all right, anything else on the Yoot Pass Motel property? Any? Anybody? All right.
Just one last thing, Shimmy. The, the, uh, engineer that I was talking to about getting the structural engineer report, uh, has not gotten back to us in time for today's meeting, which today's, you know, four o'clock today was the deadline. And so is your guys going to have an engineer?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay, because ours didn't get back, that, that person didn't get back either. Thanks.
I, I believe I got, uh, I got somebody. I will send you, the minute he's gonna send me a really good scope of his work, uh, an email detailed, I'll forward it to you guys so you can see it as well. Um, but I believe we are on the right track now. Uh, he's going to have access to an engineer as well, uh, which we will definitely need. All right, um, anybody else on that old business? All right, new business, uh, potential action concerning the Yoot Pass Motel project, um, I believe, Mike?
I'm sorry, what's Shimmy again?
Uh, potential action concerning the Yoot Pass Motel.
Oh, well, that was, uh, that was pretty much what we just talked about.
Okay, we want to make sure.
You got, you got somebody lined up, fortunately, because, uh, the people I was asking, uh, haven't firmly, uh, agreed. So we're better off to go with your person.
Okay, sounds good.
You bet.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes, yes, Elena.
So do you have, I know that you mentioned the scope of work and whatnot, but do you have a contract ready to go that you guys are going to begin negotiating or just sign? So that we add that information in, if that's the, if that's the firm you want to go with, we would need a, a motion in a second.
Uh, okay, I think we, we do, if everyone is okay with that, um, I, I, the scope of work is what I, uh, read you guys, and I can do it again if needed. Um, and, uh, his rate was fifty dollars an hour, not to exceed two thousand dollars. Um, if, if you guys are okay with it, um, we can, we can make a motion to hire.
I'll make a motion that we hire triple D consultants, uh, under the terms that they outlined.
Is there a second? Um, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? That would be four to zero. Um, Elena, who did you put second, me or Mike, just so I know?
I put Mike, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, let me just go back, uh, one more time to judge, and, um, okay, um, discussion and possible action, we just took the action regarding, uh, oh, no, I'm sorry, discussion and possible action regarding in-person, uh, meeting, I believe. Uh, Mike wanted to go back to in-person, and I'm totally fine with it. I have no problem with it. Um, I did email our, um, let's see, I did email Natalie and asked, uh, if we can, um, go back to the MAC, if, if that's where we want to go. I just wanted to know if the possibility is there, and, um, the possibility is there. We can definitely meet at the MAC in-person on the second Wednesday at three thirty PM from now on, if that's what you guys want to do. Discussion. Uh, Mike, you're muted. I just want to let you know.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I mean, ask Larry, Larry's going to probably be affected the most by that. Um, the other thing is too, uh, didn't, Natalie had told you she couldn't come to our meetings anymore, right?
That is correct, um, you know, with.
So you might tell the board that.
Um, yeah, you're correct. Uh, yeah, Natalie did say that she cannot, uh, attend our meetings anymore because of the discussion, uh, about the Yoot Pass Motel and, uh, ex parte, um, so, uh, that's, that's, that's the reason she's not with us. Um, uh, I did email Natalie. I did email her on the Manitou Art Center, uh, email that she has, if it makes any difference. Um, and I did not have any discussion with her about the Yoot Pass Motel, to be clear. Um, so, um, that's why Natalie is not with us, uh, for the moment, just to let you guys know. Okay.
Uh, as far as in-person meetings, I, I do realize the benefit of in-person meetings. Uh, uh, Mike is right, it will be a, a huge inconvenience to me. I'm, I'm willing to do that because of the importance of what we're, the project we're taking on.
Okay, thank you for that. I do have a question though, uh, probably to, uh, Elena or Kristen. Um, if we do go back to the MAC, which I'm not sure, I don't think you were around when you, when we were there, were you?
I wasn't, no.
Okay, basically, second floor of the MAC, um, I just want to make sure that, um, if we're all going to be there, and let's say Larry won't be able to, we can still do a Zoom, uh, a link for him to join while we're still sitting there, is that correct?
Yeah, we could do a, a hybrid meeting for him. That would be fine. I, so I'll have to go over there to see like what equipment or whatever they're working with, so I can just figure that out on our end, but that's no issue.
Or do you have a spot there in City Hall that we could use?
Uh.
Would that be easier for you?
I mean, yeah, it would be easier. Um, I don't think anybody has a meeting at three thirty on the second Wednesdays. Um I have to double check that though, because occasionally I think there's a planning meeting that starts like right at five. So they're usually setting up while we're meeting. But I mean, we can always play that later. I can confirm, I'll confirm now, let you guys know.
Okay, that sounds uh like a plan. Now, did you guys do we need um, do we need a motion if we want to go back to uh in-person?
Yeah.
Or we do. Okay, did you guys want to do that? Or do you want to think about it and determine the place and then decide?
Let's let Elena check it out and make sure that that's okay before we move forward with that. Uh I appreciate the fact that you said you, we could have a hybrid meeting. I I would say I would make every effort to always be there, however.
Okay.
Appreciate that call back.
Oh, yeah, awesome. Um, okay, any? Okay, so we basically said we will uh keep this for next uh next meeting. Elena, is that, is that uh?
Yeah, I'll put it back on the agenda and um I'll let you guys know by then the exact schedule for Memorial Hall and then when I find out over at the MAC.
Okay, thank you.
Oh.
And I didn't want to forget, but can you add, you might as well if you're writing it for next time, can you add uh uh employee um
Oh, yeah, I already have that, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will probably, um I'm pretty sure I'm gonna have uh several more. Um and we might have a an outside presentation. Uh a firm contacted me yesterday. Um and and I couldn't add him uh today with too, too, too uh short of a time, so uh we might have a presentation next uh next month.
Okay.
Um, okay, um, good on you, business. Uh any discussion, you guys? Is there public comment?
Nope, I don't see anybody.
All righty, um if everyone is uh good with that, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Bye. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.